State Banking Trust has been invested in Winfield and Marion County for more than a century, and today we remain deeply committed to meeting the needs of local families and businesses with excellent financial products and friendly down-home service.
But more than that, we're dedicated to supporting the growth, success, and well-being of our community as a whole. Because when it comes right down to it, there's nothing more important than community.
And just like our outstanding city officials, police, and fire departments, you can count on State Banking Trust to help make Winfield and Marion County a great place to live for everyone who calls this area home.
Hello, I'm Chuck at Span Hardware and Equipment, Winfield, Alabama. So happy to be with you today and would like to tell you about all the things we have for the upcoming spring season. We've got you covered if you want chainsaws, weed trimmers, lawn mowers, zero-turn regular lawn tractors. We also have a good selection of barbecue grills. So come see us. Thank you.
I'm here, owner-operator of Alexander's Heating and Air Condition.
We've been family-owned and operated since 1954, proudly serving Marion, Fayette, and Lamar County. We are carrier factory authorized dealers, but service all makes and models. We specialize in residential and light commercial HVAC systems.
So as we get ready to enter another hot Alabama summer, please remember Alexander's Heating and Air for all your HVAC needs.
Hey, this is Eric Simmons at Furniture Depot in Gwin. We've been here in Gwin for 10 years, serving the needs of families like yours with furniture from Ashley, Serenity Sleep, Million Dollar Rustic. We have stores in Gwin and Fayette. So come see me here at Gwin or my wife at Fayette, and we'll be happy to serve you.
Hi, my name is Chris Nelson, owner of Nelson Boys Paint and Body LLC, located State Highway 129, Winfield, Alabama. At Nelson Boys Paint and Body, our goals are to meet your expectations in repairing or painting your vehicle. Stop by for a free estimate. Our services include glass replacement, small and large auto repairs, and we have top-notch paint booth for your painting needs. We take all insurance and can save you on your debt. Come see us and let our over 40 years experience work for you. We're here to assist you and to help you on all your auto body and paint needs. Come see us.
Plan your perfect stay at the Holiday Inn in Gwin off of I-22. Enjoy our amazing on-site restaurant and bar with a lunch buffet every Sunday. Relax with a quick getaway with your family and make a splash in our outdoor pool. Book your next event with us. Call us at (205) 468-4625.
Hey friends, this is Chil Pollard at Pollard Motors in Winfield. If you're in the market for a used car, we have a good selection of SUVs, vans, and small sedan cars. If we don't have it, we can help you find it. We'll do our best to help you eat them any way we can. Remember, we can't eat them, they won't hatch, we gotta sell them.
Hello, everyone. My name is Ryan Knight, and I am a board member of the Hamilton Area Chamber of Commerce. I want to invite everyone to come out and join us for the annual Budahatchee River Fall Festival on Saturday, October 29th, from 9:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. We'll start off the morning with the Kiwanis 5K race, then go directly downtown for a fun field and action-packed day. We plan to have a car show, tractor show, motorcycle ride, benefiting the nonprofit Hooper Paul, and a lineup of great entertainment from all over the area that the whole family is sure to enjoy. Be sure to join us the last Saturday in October for our annual Budahatchee River Fall Festival, right here in downtown Hamilton, Alabama. If you're interested in being a vendor, please call the office at (205) 921-7786.
I'd like to pray. The great Son of God, thank you again for the other day of life, Lord. Thank you, Father, for me a blessing you give us, Lord. Forgive us what we don't realize are blessings that we receive from you, Lord. My Lord, I pray that you'll be with us as we go through this business transaction for the city of Winfield, that we'll have the best interest of people in mind and keep things in your will. You give with us as we go through the rest of this week, and I pray that you continue to be with us as we go through the treatments that he's going through and all the other city people. I'm a precious member for you.
I pray to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, free, and just as for all.
I'd like to welcome everybody to October 10, 20, 2012. I'm in the meeting. Probably my agenda looks up, not really long. First item on the agenda is appropriate council meetings from October 4, 20, 2012. Meeting, we'd ask for motion before those minutes, if anybody's got a question or come in. Motion, second. Okay, all in favor? Next item on the agenda is Housing Authority Board appointment. We got a letter of recommendation from the Housing Authority Board. They would like to see us appoint Michael McCollum to the board of commission of the Housing Authority of Winfield. Their board has decided to interview him, and that's who they recommended we put in that position, the Housing Authority, was Michael McCollum. Based on their recommendation and study of that, my recommendation comes to appoint him to that board. Got a motion, second. All in favor? Next item on the agenda is surplus, Park One Little Beds. This is, I'll find out. City of Winfield Park Recreation Department now taking bid of 301 more, more of 1 to 225K more grasshopper, number 2 to 224 grasshopper, more of 3 to 124 grasshopper. They've been available for inspection from 7:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. weekdays down at the park. We've got, I thought we got four bids. First bid that we've got is going to be from Kevin Crumpton on mower number 1 to 225. More number 1, 225, Kevin Crumpton. I'd ask any weed debt. What I've got. That bid looks like a $190, $190. Kevin Crumpton on mower number 1. Kevin Crumpton's bidding on mower number 2, 224 more. More number 2, 224, $10. Oh, I'm bidding on number 2. Next bid is Kevin Crumpton on mower number 3, the 124, $100, $100 on mower number 3. That was the first bidder. We got Curtis Fox. Bidding on number 3, looks like mower number 3. $100 on mower number 3, Curtis Fox. That's it. That's the only one he bid on, bid on 3 more. I assume this bid here is probably from J.J. Merchant. Bid on 225 grasshopper, which was mower number 4, 225.
Number 1.
Number 1. Bid on the 125, on the 225 more, $177.77. 177, 177. Same person, J.J. Merchant. Bid on the 224. More. 225. Sorry, switch.
225.
224. Bid on that was 277.77. 277.77. Next on the 124 more from J.J. Merchant. $1,177.77. It's going to be on the 124. Got one more bid here. This one's on power 4, 124 more. This will be the 124, 3 again. $497.
Are these first two, two mowers cranking running?
Sir?
Do the first two mowers cranking run?
I don't know.
The first one does. The second one doesn't have a motor or anything. It's just a carcass. Like, we brought it for ours.
Is the council willing to refuse all those bids or take those bids? My recommendation is to probably take the bids and bid them to the reward, to the highest bidder on each one. Probably Kevin Crumpton on mower number 1, and then J.J. Merchant will be on 2 and 3. Motion, second. All in favor? Next item on the agenda is discussion on the CARES Act funds for water project. We've talked about this, what we need to do with the rest of the CARES Act money. As a council, I've got to, I'll pass this around. This is what we've spent thus forward out of the CARES Act money, and what we've spent, what we've spent on, and what it went. That's what I wrote in the paper, what the balance, balance should be. You know, we've got roughly $415,000 left out of the 1.1 million, a little over 1.1. The CARES Act money, we've received all that money, we have all that money on hand. You know, like I said, we spent $300,000, $359,000 on a, we've done some sewer work at the community center. Employees, COVID money, the first round employee COVID money, library book sanitizer, and a fire loop, CPR device, air purifiers, and then HVAC system. We upgraded the HVAC system. Which, you know, it's going to be for the council's decision how we move forward with spending the rest of the CARES Act money. I just want to plug in that, you know, for that I have talked about, we needed housing and that we could use that money for sewer expansion and water, water sewer expansion for making more housing up close to the interstate. That's a topic up there, but I just, you know, we just, we got our needs, as say three, Tom has come by and expressed the same feel that we need for housing, places for people to live. We got a lot of people, more people trying to move to the area, move south, some of different states or whatever, and everybody is hurting for housing. And I would like to, for y'all to make a consider, sewer and water project that might could help us increase, or we might add housing in the city because we kind of push out space to do much housing. I just wanted to pass that around and show you how, what money we spent and what's left.
So you got this $300,000, what did the water department, you could do this in Smith up here?
Yes, I took it up, totally. Because it shows in the balance, bid $700 and something. We said we're going to do $300,000 to the water department, so we need to go ahead and know that that.
We need to go ahead and do that because we're holding them up.
We're holding them. Y'all ready?
We're ready.
I'm holding here. I like that.
As soon as, as soon as we get the money, we'll turn it to ladies and Rod's already out, part of it. We'll turn him lips on the other part and get that project completed. Right when we first met, not with COVID, we agreed to pay for the water lines and strip pumps and put it down there. At that time, we didn't realize it, but that is COVID covered. That's qualified. Even lower price, the pipe is going to go up since COVID, but now we have COVID money, so our cost is going to be zero. You probably figure $15,000 for pipe now instead of the $5,000, so we're looking at roughly $400,000.
Mike, can you tell them what the miscellaneous?
What is the miscellaneous?
There's an ink you may can, I can answer this too. Kilgore Services, $900 payment. I don't know exactly what it covered. There's a Zogics, Z-O-G-I-C-S field, I think may have been like cleaning, hand soap, hand dispenser, cleaning type, and I think there were just dorm damage claim, something paid out of COVID in relation to the tornado damage. So those three things together make up the miscellaneous.
Mayor, are we talking on water, Ken? I? We got some good news and we got some bad news, always. No problem. We did receive an AR grant from the state in the amount of $815,000. $65,000 of that is earmarked for an audit. We've got to have three-year audit in order to get this money. Now the state has come back and said you've got to have water tank maintenance, broken doors. So now we've got two water tanks to paint and clean out. That's probably going to be all that money yet. Want to come in like?
Midway Drive.
Midway Drive and?
The one over there by?
The industrial part.
Yeah.
Around Green Mill. Right. And just the curtain, that tank, what was it, 2, 3 years ago? And we got the price on it, $40,000 to curtain it. And we've got to do that to keep from getting paint on anything else. No one's bet on it without that. But just to let you know, we did, we did get that money. We're putting the lymn tree on the tanks if we have anything left over. Not on the tanks, the lymn tree on the tanks. And we've also got to have a portable generator. We don't have but one. On the tornado tank, they would have to put it on a sewer pumping station. So we don't have anything to back it up on, a water pumping station. So that's what our plans are right now. We just thought we'd let you know we did.
To get that, you had to, you had to say that that's what you?
Right. That's all we aim to be useful.
I just want to pass that around and let you know what we spent and what we spent on and the total budget in there. Maybe we'll expand sewer and water, and I know it's, you know, it's separate, separate from the city, but it's very beneficial for the city. So for housing and trying to move, I think, better ahead in the whole scheme of things. We want industry, we want to get industry, but if we don't have places for people to live, we're not going to have, well, we need for industry. I mean, we have to build, we have to build a workforce, so to speak, get out of place for them to live. Everybody knows that we, that we're all over country, places shut down, different things because not having employees for whatever reason, work ethics and different things. I just, I just feel like that we might need to put strongly considering maybe looking into expanding the sewer and water up toward the interstate.
James, correct me if I'm wrong, the Shell Station, is that the only pumping station we got? We just got one at the Shell Station on this side. We don't have anything else on the other side?
We've got a dry well over there, or wet well over there. We had a pumping station over there.
How many years ago?
When Bill West was there. There was a big deal going on at that time that they were going to annex that land there back into Bryant if we didn't get sewer on that side of the road or that side of the interstate. So we put a pumping station there, and it sat there, not running it, and just ruined. So now we're going to have to completely redo it or put a new one in. There's nothing left.
But do we have access onto the interstate?
We do have access.
That's a major, major problem.
But we're going to have to get power over there before we can run a pumping station. And that's, that's the reason it just sit there. We didn't, couldn't get three phase over there.
Put a plug in for something to be on those two lots up there.
We also have water on both sides of the interstate.
And when you're, when we're talking about it being on the other side of the interstate, it's on the east side of 129, or is it on the west side?
The pumping station is on the west side, so there's water on both sides.
City of Winfield, city water.
And there's drabies lined already in place up to that, with that little gravel rather because it goes up to the left. There's drabies that are lined up to there.
But there's no sewer on the west side, east side?
I don't think so.
I just want to put that, everybody's looked at that and want to put that thought in your mind there for us moving forward, what we're going to do, you know. We have things and what we need to do, although I need to, I'm going to go into, unless anybody else has got anything to add about, about that discussion, you know, or if they're asking any questions, I'm going to go on to the next item.
So are we going forward with the money, Dan? Is that what we?
No, we haven't loaded on.
So we have the water department?
Oh, we have, we'll write them a check tomorrow. If they're ready for it, ready for it, about ready to print it out.
Well, they'll have to finish engineering.
Is that, we, we will have enough money to do that project for, that pumping station for that, what we're dedicating that money for, we look for the grant or the stipulation. Yeah, for the money to, to that.
And the responsibility, if the responsibility that if, if what we spend it on is not qualified and it has to be paid back, since we got the money, we got to pay it back.
That'll be, that's the only thing we'll spend it on.
Yep.
That $300,000.
And I don't?
If there's anything left over, we'll come back to you.
Yeah, I just, I just didn't want to fall into fail because it wasn't enough.
We won't know now until he gets into it. As soon as he gets engineer, I get you on. Right on. Everybody's going to?
Now, my understanding, James, I mean, if there's, if there's a slight difference in the actual cost of the water department versus the, once we start the project, if there's a slight difference, the water department's going to finish the project, whatever the cost is, they'll have to, they'll, but they will finish the project once they accept the money. Is that it? Yeah. It's going to get done once we get the money. If there's a deviation in a little bit, they'll have to, they'll pick it up, and then they'll have the future maintenance on it, which is another big, you know, expense to them.
It was a lesson learned for me early on, when we was trying to do the project down on the bridge, when we had to have our utilities relocation, whatever, the water department agreed to pay X amount of dollars when the project, we seen the project was going to be lit. You know, we paid the engineering fee, and the project never happened, so it's more on their part. So I'm just turning the favor, that's all I'm trying to do, is make sure that we put the investment in that and we're going to be able to.
Yes.
If we can't do the project, we'll hand you $30,000, probably $300,000 back.
I appreciate that, John. I appreciate you bringing some speed about your other grant. Winfield, this area's been very fortunate, being on time and filing what we need to get what money we can get out of the CARES Act and the grants and different things for it moving, getting projects done. We've been real fortunate on CDBG grants, we've got, you know, demolition, we just did regal, hospital, we got a million-dollar grant received to them for your MRI, which is a 50/50 mattress, so we're doing real well. So we're doing real well. I feel like doing what we're supposed to do, trying to get what money we can and come back to try to further development in Winfield. The next item on the agenda is discussion on employees' insurance costs. Gina asked for this to be put on the agenda to discuss the pay difference between what we call the deal that we...
Because, well, the insurance is going up in January again. And it's six point four percent according to... And right now, we do an assembly thirty. And I know in some situations, sometimes when they're even... The, to keep it from falling on the employee, sometimes that, that change is discovered. But I was just kind of playing around with the idea of maybe either changing what we do, instead of doing a assembly thirty, do like a seventy-five twenty-five or even an eighty-twenty. To try to help with some of that cost.
Have you, have you discussed with my, or had any discussion on how much, how much more we're just going to put out for the city?
Yes, he actually, you said Nathan, or do you remember it off the top of your head?
It was in the last budget packet, but for eighty-twenty, you're just over fifty-four thousand. And then if you do a seventy-five twenty-five, then you're roughly twenty-seven thousand or a little more.
What was that last figure?
If you go, if you go with seventy-five twenty-five, then you'd be a little bit over twenty-seven thousand. You're, for this coming year. Now, of course, as your insurance increases, it's going to bump that up a little. But for the coming fiscal year, before the increase goes up in January after, twenty, twenty-seven thousand, if you do a seventy-five twenty-five, or a little bit over fifty-four thousand, if you do an eighty-twenty split.
Did you, have you, I apologize to Council of Love, if I don't ask the question, it comes online enough to get it. You may have some of the same questions. I'm not trying to take the floor away from the question. You're going, it's going up six point four percent?
Yes, sir.
Have you figured what that six point, six point four percent increase would be?
I don't have with me tonight where I can just pull that number. I've done an increase per department, but not really a total.
Look at twenty-eight thousand dollars.
You may be right, James, but I don't...
We go from seventy, seventy-five to twenty-seven thousand.
For that five percent?
That's fine, seventy, so another seven and a half, one twenty-eight thousand dollars.
I think you'd be right, right on the money, twenty-eight, thirty, somewhere in there.
In the previous, in the previous, we had, I think, a little percent increase last year on...
Maybe a little more, but somewhere around forward, five and a half, probably the last three or four years.
So the city then just passed that along to the employee?
If you had a four percent increase, the city basically paid seventy percent of that four percent increase and the employee paid thirty percent of the four percent increase. It just, it just got factored into the total insurance cost and it was a seventy-thirty split.
Make it seventy-two twenty-eight, that's going to supply the employee about even. A seventy-two thirty-two. It's going to play twenty-eight.
Twenty-eight.
You're twenty-eight. You're at seventy, you're seventy thirty-nine?
Yeah.
That's, that's, that's put them by you.
You know what our insurance cost is?
Each month.
Year.
I don't reach roughly thirty-two thousand a month, so...
Yeah. Three, probably three, seventy-three eighty.
The Keel Gore Services that was paid out of the rest of the funds that we talked about a little ago. That was kitchen oven plugs, ball field plugs, ball field scoreboard, and ball field lots.
How much is that?
That was the nine oh one thirty. And what was the other one you had a question about?
Well, it was the tunnel miscellaneous. What the breakdown of that.
There's three of them. Do you know the names of them?
It's something with BOGS, yes. So...
Okay, that is the AED for the fire department. That's twenty-five ninety.
I mean, the listed hours. Because that's already up here.
Well...
Because we, I'm here, it says... The listed hours, eighteen thousand two hundred.
This one is, um... A lock pack AED.
That's, that unlock pack doesn't have the package. It came as a package.
This one was twenty-five ninety.
With the total of...
Yeah, this one was separate. I think he bought this one before that. This was in March.
Okay, so that was that?
Twenty-five ninety.
What's that?
It was...
I'm going to wait for the... Okay, I'm just wondering if the total is almost four thousand dollars.
But here's, here's the lock team, I want to get this here.
I think the balance to make it even is that finally we paid the consultant. So those were the three things. So it's...
I still have those.
Mike, this goes up from January one?
Yes, January one.
Yes.
It does go into effect as of January.
What, what we budgeted for the coming year, including the six point four percent increase, based on seventy-thirty split, was right at three hundred and eighty-three thousand dollars. That's the city's seventy percent for the coming year.
You base that question on what it was a year before?
On, on the current rate plus in January for nine months after the rate goes up, we factored in the, the increase.
Is that, I figured you're talking about factored, factored in increase.
Yes, sir. Three, three months at the current rate and nine months at the new rate.
Sure.
Three months at the current rate and then nine months at the new rate.
You base that on the employees you got now?
On what we have now and two new hires in the police. And we budgeted one replacement hire in the street department. So we went and budgeted as if we were filling those positions, actually as of October one, even though some may not be filled till later.
You said, you said it's three hundred more dollars?
Three hundred and eighty-three thousand would be the city's seventy percent share for the coming year.
Council wants to study on that a little more, take it a little back, since we got, we got a month or so.
Mike, if you would put all the figures on the picture paper for us and make, make sure we work figures on.
How, how do you want to drill it up?
Just total amount, that's all it is.
Seventy-five twenty-five, eighty-twenty.
Total amount, we're not...
What it's going to be if we don't change it.
Yeah.
Well, if it does change, you're planning your three hundred and eighty-three thousand.
Three hundred and eighty-three.
You're, you're confident with that figure?
Yes, sir.
That's city share the whole time?
The city, city share.
No, no, no.
Three ninety-four.
I don't know what percentage is on.
Council, okay, we'll take them out. All right.
We'll figure that out.
Next item, the next item on the agenda is discussion CARES Act funds for employees payout. Gina asked for that to be put on the agenda. If you would allow that, Gina.
Well, this is just the second round that we had, so that we would discuss. And also, we had talked about doing a new payroll system. And if we did go with that, this would help to kind of make it for any lost time while we're making that transition. Because I think they're saying, is it one to two days, Angie?
They, I don't know that we're going to have that anymore. They hadn't said for certain, but I don't look for it. To switch everybody over on direct deposit, I'm going to have a delay. So I may not have a delay when we do another thing.
Because originally they said it could be a one to three day delay because the pay period would change depending on when you have to turn things in and when the direct deposit would come in. And that's when this would have to make a difference in the paycheck.
So you're saying there's not going to be a delay?
That was when we were going to do it and use the local bank. There was going to be a two, roughly a two day delay. But the service that we're using, there's not a delay.
It was just by the way you give it to them.
Yep.
Do you want it for script, Mike, script? Get them ready to thank you.
Give one in?
Do we want it for the first December or make the Thanksgiving?
For the last time, we did it in four, we did it four payments for four hundred dollars.
Right.
And then marketing was four payments for two hundred dollars.
And that's employees working during the coverage, should I? And the boys weren't even covered, should I? And a pitch for pay, for funding, you sent me to look at, I guess, the other night, Angie. Guess you're covering it for the more.
What's the council's thoughts, Gina?
Well, I just brought it up because we said that we would revisit it again when we got the second payment.
You putting that in motion? We haven't asked for a motion, uh, when we made more, any discussion on, uh, we know what our motion is, our motion is to move forward with the Carers Act, uh, in COVID, I call it. It's all the same, maybe, COVID. Second round of COVID payback to the boys, which will come out of Carers Act money.
We said, well, we did it the first time, we said that we would revisit it and do a power for the second payment, we got the second check. And that's why I brought it up, cause we got the second check. And it should be in our minutes properly that we discussed that we.
Well, there, council. That's another item, council, not, to act on that, I mean, we don't have to act on. She won't bring it back before the council, because we said that we'd look at the second round when we did the first one. Of course, you know, that, it don't affect the budget, so to speak, for, cause it's not, it's not in the budget for the Carers Act. I didn't find you balance down, but just don't know what to put in. I put three, four things. Tim, the last person to table it. Just more thought in what we're gonna do with the whole, the whole balance, I think. Kind of what you're gonna say, what we're gonna do with the whole balance of it. What we're gonna do with the balance, I think, it's down to what we added, be a good idea to figure what you're gonna do with the balance. To figure that in, if you wanna figure that in, and what you're gonna spend the rest of the funds on. You know, we see it. We have, we can, and definitely we won't, won't do, before we do that. Counsel, I'm trying to propose a discussion, another meeting.
I'd like to have that too, possibly, if there's merit. Motion to do it, motion to table it.
Discussion, as a direct with that. This might be. I'm gonna ask for a motion to table, propose a discussion, man, I'll ask for that motion, and Tim's gonna make that motion to table it. Um, I don't think Gina really has a problem tabling it, because she's bringing it, because we're gonna further the discussion of doing it. I just think it'd be wise if we figure what we're gonna do with what's left of the bulk of the money, to make our decision of how we're gonna spend it. We talked about that one topic before. Yeah, I think we need to, we need to, we need to have a plan moving forward, what we're gonna do with it.
I'd like to have that discussion put on, getting on the agenda next week, for what was that much kind of rest of money on? Cause I know some things that we can qualify for, that we're thinking about doing for our, for.
Do that, counsel, bring things to the table, if you wanna, uh, see, try to make a see what I've, I've stressed, what I've spoke, what I would like to see us try to do, but I'd like the council to bring other opinions of what they feel like we need to do for it, moving forward with it. I think it'd be best for us to discuss it in a whole, and maybe get something concrete, or we'll have to pick away at it.
If we come to a, you know, but.
Yeah.
So can you, I'll need Gina for next?
We can. We'll table it for the next, put that down, table it, put it on next. All right, we got a discussion for purchase of ATV for the police and fire department. Uh, Gina asked for that to be put on the agenda. Gina, can you, what, what we've been left?
Okay, um, the one reason that this discussion got started was after meal day. Um, every year when we have meal day, we go around to different departments and borrow ATVs. Everybody's always been very nice to let us borrow them, but the fire department, they borrowed, I don't know exactly how many they borrowed this time. And I just think that we need to purchase our own, because there's several things that we could do with these. Um, as far as the fire department, I know a lot of, I know Hamilton, for example, their fire department uses theirs at football games. They have a backboard insert on theirs, so that if someone gets hurt on the field, they use the suicide to, um, go get the player off the field and bring them to the ambulance. Um, and that's what we use them for at meal day, because with so many people in town, if you can't maneuver an ambulance around town, so we would set up different posts, and if somebody passed out or whatever, we would send someone down there with an ATV to get them and bring them to the ambulance. I know there's several different things at the fire department, other things they can do that they have, same thing with the police department. Yes, search and rescue. And this, this is a quote that we got, the one that's fully loaded with everything that the fire department would need to do a search and rescue. Um, as far as the police department, they, um, theirs would be different. It would include all this stuff, it would be more basic, and then they would, um, do their addition that they sit there for theirs.
You notice it's delivery time on that deal?
Actually, I did know that.
Around the forty days?
So just in time for meal day next year. But, just like everything else, I think we got a quote on these, like in twenty twenty, and the quote that we got then compared to the quote we got now is pretty big difference, but that's just like everything else. Everything else is, everything is gonna, but. I think both departments can really benefit from it.
Have you, uh, you discussed that?
Yeah.
Right, chief, what was his, what was his thought?
Um, you were just asking?